I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call of Alderman.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Cincella.
Here.
Alderman Pusa.
Here.
Alderman Bettner.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Anthony. Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderman Salisbury.
Here.
Alderman Delman.
Here.
Alderman Cybert.
Here.
Alderman White.
Here.
Alderman Galletti.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wiggington.
Here.
Alderman Musgrove.
Here.
Alderman Anthony is excused. Roll call of department heads, please.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
City Attorney Horner.
Here.
Police Chief Bill Clay. Fire Chief Tom Moore.
Here.
Ken Vaughn. Bruce Carlisle.
Here.
Jamie Matron.
Here.
Tim Gregwoods.
Here.
Jim Snyder.
Here.
Leander Spearman.
Here.
Nissa McCaskill. Chuck Schaefer. Debbie Bellevue.
Here.
Bob Sable.
Here.
Okay, we have a list of department heads excused tonight. Chief Plait to leave vacation. Lieutenant Colonel Sparker's here on his behalf. Chuck Schaefer called just a little while ago. He was supposed to be here tonight because Mike's on vacation. And he had a family member rush to the hospital. Nissa's mother passed away the last couple of days. She's excused. And who was the other one? Somebody else?
Johnny.
Johnny was excused, but one more staff person. Oh, well, but they were excused. So, at this time, ladies and gentlemen, if you would join me and please stand for the pleasure of the evening. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I know who the other one was, it was Ken Vaughn. He got called right before the meeting, too, for one of his parents fell. So, tough, tough day on family. At this time, first thing we have this evening is I'm going to open a public hearing. And this public hearing is in reference to 6401 West Main Street, the marketplace business district. As you know, for several weeks, actually, the course of the last couple of months, we've been following the guidelines and procedures to, first of all, study and to look at this area at 6401 to see if it qualified for a proposed business district. As you know, Mr. Narber has been before us, giving us updates, talked about the qualifications, that it did qualify due to certain numerous blinding conditions. And we're here tonight as one last part of this is to officially have the public hearing. So, the public hearing's now open. If anyone has any comment about this business district that they would like to make, whether it's far and against it, you might totally be totally satisfied with everything you've read or asked on your own, and there may be no questions, but this is your opportunity to make public comment on this proposed business district at 6401 West Main. Anyone this evening?
My name is Halon Abbott. I'm Sub-54 in Elmore. And I just have one question or comment. I mean, it's pretty obvious that this area is blighted. I mean, it's deteriorated. I understand that and see that. And we're gonna do the normal things we do, the blighted areas, you know, sales tax rebates for construction material, which is, I don't understand, because the state's broke, but anyway. But my question is, how did this area become blighted? I mean, we have ordinances and rules and regulations and codes, and someone owns it now. Okay, I don't, somebody owns it. If we, and there was people in there before at Price River, how does it become blighted? How does it become deteriorated if we're not enforcing the codes? And so, we end up, this is the way I see it, we end up as taxpayers having to pay to fix it, because TIF money is taxpayer money, sales tax abatement is taxpayer money, somebody has to make up for that. This is, we're putting together a, you know, we do a 1 percent, so if you go there and buy something after this development, you know, we're charging 11 percent, and then he gets it from the developer. But I don't understand how it becomes, if we have the codes and regulations, if we're not enforcing them, how do you get holes in a roof? How do you get whatever and let it go? Why don't we, I say, we put pressure on the people that owned it before. This is too late now. All I'm saying, and I think there's other areas that we need to look at, and I don't see why we can't do that. I don't understand. Somebody complained to me, if it's empty by, we just, we don't have any code, we don't have anything to say about it, we just let it go. I think we should push those, whoever owns it, fix it and keep it up, so we don't get anything done. I can look at Carlisle Plaza, I live on the east end. I can see 10 years from now, if nobody enforces, that place is gonna be empty and somebody's gonna be asking for money. You know, so that's my comment.
Thank you. Anyone else in regards to the public hearing on 6401 West Main? Yes, sir?
Yeah, Rich Brown, Bellevue. Hey, you know, this is another set of businesses that, the guy's not allowed to do certain things on his own, because you have to use certain people in Bellevue to do work on things, unlike other cities. You gotta hire your guys as electricians, your guys as plumbers, all this stuff, and this is how this stuff gets. And the extra taxes that are paid, we gotta pay for, and it's gonna be fun for the union guys that are gonna be doing the work on the property out there. And you know what? A lot of this could be changed if, you know, you let people do their own work on their own properties, instead of letting them get like this. This could've been changed 50 years ago, but it ain't changed. And the guy's right. I mean, you know, out there where the old Walmart, that's gonna end up like this, too. There's all this empty space out of there. Businesses will run out for one reason or another, and, you know, we gotta pick up the tab for it, the taxpayers. I own a lot of property in this town. I pay a lot of taxes. It just ain't right, because there's so many times, I mean, I was told when I had my business before I retired, I couldn't even change an electric outlet, I had to hire a nun. What, $0.59 outlet? Oh, I gotta hire somebody to come in. I got an estimate for it, $117 for something I could've done in two minutes. And if I did it myself, I'd get arrested.
Thank you. Anyone else reference the business district? Hearing none, I'm going to close, unless the council has some questions, I told Mr. Narber I wasn't gonna call on him unless there was any other addition correction, but we've been through his explanations and his findings. If no one else has any questions, I'm gonna close this public hearing referring to that we called tonight for 6401 West Main. This time, I'm gonna open public participation to the normal city council meeting. Is there anything additional tonight that, addition to this topic we just had? Yes, sir?
Michael Hackburg, Bellevue. I just wanna comment, it leads a little bit to the agreement for 6401, the business agreement. I'm very happy to see that it's one of the first ones I've seen that's actually drafted by lawyers, written very clear with both parties' responsibilities in it, with their deadlines in it, and I'm very happy to see that we moved from a cotton base which will ignore that contract to something that hopefully will be followed and enforced and we'll see this project move forward. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Yes, sir?
Rick Brown again. You guys missed me over the last few months? No?
Mr. Brown, this isn't question, question, question answering the council. Make your comments, okay?
Okay. I'm here tonight, doesn't have anything to do with the Alderman. Doesn't have anything to do with Dean or Dowd. I'm here tonight because you've got a rogue employee in this city. Remember the Mayberry show, Danny Griffith? Remember Barney Fife, the guy you worked for? Had the little bullet he kept in his pocket? Well, it's time that you took the bullet away from Barney Fife Sable back there, because he's gone rogue. He told me and Bob White at a meeting in there that he went to Garrett Horn and Brian Flynn and said that they told him that they could, he could reinterpret the ordinance as far as inspections. Guess how he changed it? Not just would change his tenancy. If you have a son or daughter that is serving overseas for four tours and comes home, guess what? You have to get an inspection and pay 60 bucks for it, and then charge $50 to add it to the permit. If you adopt a child, 50 bucks. You have an elderly parent who's been with you, you gotta get an inspection. Now, I know that the city attorneys couldn't have told him this, but we need to know, did he do this on his own? Did the mayor tell him to do it? And did the city attorneys okay this stuff? Because you move a, let's say you have a butler you wanna move in, you know, gotta get an inspection. I mean, we all know about the, when they were coming out to my house last year and taking pictures through the windows with my wife, now they wanna come in and go through her underwear drawer? I mean, this inspection process is intrusive. You guys all got the list on what yet they have to inspect, and the furniture's already in the homes. People are already living in there. Gotta move the furniture out of the way to check the outfits. It's illegal and unconstitutional, and it's a reach, it's a real reach, to go into people's homes that are already living there with a coerced inspection system. And that's what it is. It's without consent. I mean, as it is, they don't get consent anyway. I've had people, I've had police officers and inspectors on my property, and when I told them not to come on there, they came on anyway, didn't get a search warrant. That's against the law. It's right in the code, it says that they have to do that. I wanna know the night under new business, instead of some smoke-filled room afterwards, you know, that the public doesn't hear. I wanna know, who gave the authority to Sable to come up with this garbage? Because he oughta be fired for it, because he's opened up the city for Fourth Amendment claims.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Yes, sir, ma'am, I can't see, yes, back in the back, I could see, could see whose hand it was.
Hi, my name is Kayla Adams, and I'm 16 years old. A few weeks ago, I applied for a petition to be able to have a peace march in downtown Bellevue. I wanted for my march to start at Douglas Elementary School and continue its way to the courthouse in downtown Bellevue, which is 1.3 miles. My petition was supposed to be on the agenda tonight, and it was taken off as of Friday with no reasoning. I would like for this to be reconsidered. It is a peace march where everyone is welcome, there are many teenagers and adults who want to come to this march, and they want to be able to show their voice, and there's been a signetism against my age group especially, that says that we do not do anything, and we do not fight for what we believe in, but this is something for my age group, and we all want to participate in it, and we all wanna have our chance to peacefully do what is right and have equality and come together.
We, okay, if I can answer you a little bit. Assistant Police Chief told me on Friday, you may or may not know him, but we moved last week, and we were in the process a couple of days of moving the administrative police department in my office over to the new police station. He told me on Friday that, I think someone tried to get ahold of you, but what we didn't put on the agenda, because we, and we do wanna meet with you, Jim's here tonight, I can talk to you afterwards, we'll set up a meeting. We were waiting to talk to the city attorney. I don't know that we can grant permission to a 16-year-old to orchestrate a march or orchestrate a thing, but if you have adults working with you, we can, you know, somebody can, but that's a new question, it's never been proposed in my 11 years. We're not against it, but as you know, right now, we just needed to get together and meet with the people involved, get all the details, and make sure, because right now, in what's going on throughout the region, the country, the world, we have to make sure that no matter what kind of march we might have, that we have ample police protection and what's that dollar value to the city, et cetera. So, if you contact my office tomorrow, we'll set up a meeting. Like I said, last week was a blur because we were moving. It took a few days to find everything in our boxes, our computers were off for a day or two, but we are in there now. Assistant Police Chief, and I did talk about this on Friday, I'm glad you're here, and if you wanna check with me afterwards, we can set up a time with a few of us and sit down and see if we can work through this. But there are some definite questions we had, and with, I believe there was an attempt to get ahold of you, but like I said, we didn't, we didn't have enough information or enough, you know, about what all the details were for us to just put it on the agenda and then, you know, sit here and try to work it out, but we'll get with you, and we'll be glad to meet with you immediately.
I responded back to every email that I received from Lauren, and I also, well, from, yeah, Jennifer. And then I did contact Lauren, whoever that she gave me the email for, but I would never receive the email back between Friday, and I waited until Monday and still did not receive the email back.
I think when we get requests of this type, they go to the police chief or assistant police chief, because there are safety concerns, there are manpower concerns, if we're gonna have a march or block off the street, in some cases, depending on the route and request, we gotta get permission from IDOT if we cross or close 159, a state highway. So, there are a lot of moving parts and a lot of different things that we must do. We'll be glad to sit down and explain it to you, we'll be glad to sit down and talk about how do we, you know, get to what you're hoping to accomplish, but that's the reason that we, we just have a lot of questions that we need to work through. But we'll be glad to meet with you. You can call my office tomorrow, and we can set up a meeting and see how we, I would ask if there's a couple, whether it be your parents or any adults, I don't know what group's with you, if you could bring, you know, an adult or so with you that we could have at the table with us, I think that would, I think even the city attorney would agree with me, that's probably the smart thing to do.
There are three adults here with me tonight.
Great, I'd be glad to meet with all of you, and a couple of us will sit down and see how we can, you know, move this possibly forward, okay? All righty. Anybody else?
I'm just reading the paper, of course, obviously, somebody missed the odd Democratic Democrat, but that's true, that somebody said that, or the $200,000 final payment on the bicentennial park to one of the city's political allies, is that true or not?
Once again, Stuart, this is not quiz the mayor, this is public comment. If you have a comment, we've been talking about this park, if I think, the one you're talking about, for years, and these questions have been foiled, answered, repeated, but I'm not gonna start this answering questions, or this will get carried away, unbelievable. So, make your statement, and then we'll move on.
Okay. This Calhoun paid $150,000 for this park, the Old English Club, and he didn't do any improvements, anything, he drove some trash in there, so then a few years later, the city buys it for a million dollars, and I knew there was something there, but here it says that was bought, this Calhoun must be a political ally of the city, bobbleheads, he, well, not the bobbleheads, the ally of the bobbleheads. And I went out to the shrine a couple of times, and there's a whole lot of dirt that's, all they done out there is take off the topsoil, now there's all kinds of, probably 20 acres of clay dirt out there. There's a little work going on at Hitler House. I talked to a guy out there, and he said, "Well, it should've been done in August, but it'll probably be at least till December before it's done." Now, there's no sign whatsoever of any building, foundation, or nothing, it's just a huge expanse of clear dirt, nothing else. And I'm just wondering what's going on out there, and it seems like Bellevue is just a, anytime anybody wants to unload something, all they gotta do is come to Bellevue, they'll pay a top dollar for it. The Pornicure Store on West Main, I think that was $500,000, the Meredith Home was $500,000, the Bel Air Pool, $200,000, and it's in the wrong place, there's not a, there's not a rest, grocery store on the south end of Bellevue for 10 miles, one way out, it's stuck way out of town, and that way, and another stuck way out of town that way, there's nothing in between. And the police station, I believe they give the sweetheart deal to these bank, the bankers that owned the new police station, because they would get tired of that building, or it was not suitable for the bank, so they unhounded that on Bellevue, they converted it into a police station, and...
Okay, Stuart, we're at three minutes.
I got some more things here if you'll mind.
But I think we're at, we're at three minutes, okay?
Well, I think Scotch meal's a poor choice for this, whatever it's up for, because this tavern gets more police calls than any other tavern in Bellevue, and I filed a citizens' complaint the other day, and I got totally ignored. Thank you.
Okay, the lady on the left was first, yes, you missed him.
Kathy Gray for 500 South 19th Street, Bellevue. First of all, I wanna make a comment, what Rick Brown said about the ordinances and stuff, I think that it's a good thing, I think it's a good thing with electricians, because you get some fly-by-night guy who says, yes, he knows how to do it on Facebook or whatever, and then you've got more problems than you had before. I know, because I've had that experience, that I had to go to an electrician through the city, and it cost me more, but if I'd went through that first, I would've been able to do that. So, I think it's a good thing. Okay, number two, with the ordinance thing, with the people occupancy thing, that's a good thing as well, because if you don't get that done and have that reevaluated, you're gonna get three or four generations' worth of people of the same family or extended family or whatever, in a single household. I've had, in our neighborhood, I have experienced 15 people in a single-family dwelling, and they're all related somehow, and it's an overpopulation. So, the city needs an ordinance like that. As far as missing him, no, I didn't miss you.
I knew you loved the story.
Okay, okay, well, I had to put that in. And as far as Stuart's talking about different things about the park and all that stuff, if I had to live across the street from him, you would never not ever have peace, because I would be on the phone with him all the time. It bothers me just to drive down the street past his house, so I just wanna clarify that. I think that the park is a good thing. Also, I wanted to let everybody know that the bicentennial park on the back side of 21st Street, we have a community garden that the bicentennial neighborhood group is doing, and if you just wanna participate, we would appreciate it, and if you just wanna go out and get some tomatoes or pumpkins or whatever, do it that, too. But we're trying to prosper on both ends of the park, and their park is still really prosperous. I mean, there's cars down here every day, almost packed. So, I think it's a good thing, and I'm here with everybody else, please.
Anyone else?
That's a long walk. Rose Wells, 322 West 5th Street. You sent samples to Mr. Leonard about, no, to the young lady about protest or a peace march, and you said something key, and said we have to make arrangements for police protection. I think we, as citizens of Bellevue, need to be very grateful that we can say that we have police protection in view of everything that happened in the last so many weeks, and I'm sure this will not be the last incident. Can you imagine if you pick up the phone, dial 911, and you are told to wait because we don't have that good police force, because nobody wants to be a police officer? So, I am grateful that we have a good police force, and I think they deserve their police station, and I think that every day we have good force.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, if there's no one else, I'm gonna close public participation, and we're gonna move on to the regular portion of tonight's meeting. First of all, is there objection if I would ask for a motion to appoint Ashley Polly to serve a one-year term to historic preservation, and Keith Owens to serve a one-year term? They're both historic preservations. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Alderman Cybert to approve my recommendation. Mr. Cincella would second that. Any discussion on these two appointments to historic preservation? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bettner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Ovian.
Aye.
Salisbury.
Aye.
Delman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. I ask for a motion to appoint Scott Schmelzow, he's a downtown business owner and a current president of Bellevue Main Street, to serve on the Bellevue Township Transit Task Force, Transition Task Force. As you know, I mentioned that the lady who you approved, Tracy McCollum, ended up having a conflict, because they prefer to primarily meet on Wednesdays, and that's a bad night it turned out for her, so she asked to be removed, and I'm bringing the name forward. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Alderman Hazel, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Pusa. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bettner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Salisbury.
Aye.
Delman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. We go to approval of the minutes, we have the city council meeting minutes from July 5th, 2016. What's your pleasure? Motion by Alderman Wiggington, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Elmore to accept and file the minutes. Discussion, any changes? Hearing none, all in favor to accept and file, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Claims, payroll, and disbursements. I ask for a motion to pay the claims of $5,892,250.56 and the payroll of $892,317.21. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to pay the payroll.
Motion by Alderman Elmore, second by Alderman Ovian. Discussion on the claims or payroll. Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bettner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Salisbury.
Aye.
Delman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. We've got reports, streets, and grades, Mr. Cybert.
Yes, sir, your honor, I have two, two motions, I'd like to read them, and move it on.
Nobody objects, we'll move forward that way. Go ahead.
And a motion to approve revised MFT request, and a motion to approve 2016 annual service agreement with SCI Insurance Inc.
Two motions from Alderman Cybert, second by Alderman Delman, coming from the Streets and Grade Committee. Any discussion on those two motions? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bettner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Salisbury.
Aye.
Delman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
Uh, asking for a motion to approve a union musician, Doug Phillips, to perform a solo, as a solo singer and guitar player at the downtown Bellevue outside location of two-twenty-seven East Main Street on Thursday, July twenty-first, from six to ten. Uh, date was coordinated with Parks Department and Tavern on Main. Is this Diva Night?
Yes.
Okay, so this was approved by the council and to close off the street several months ago, but they wanted to come by and make sure that we had permission for the music from six to ten. But this is a part of Bellevue Main Street's request?
No.
No, but it's the same night coordinated?
Yes.
In the same location that they're going to have the ending spot for Diva Night?
It's actually going to be in the two-twenty-seven, but it's for Diva Night.
Okay.
I worked with Tavern on Main.
Okay. Well, he's the, he's the ending of Diva Night that night, that's why I say that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Six to ten.
Do I hear a motion to approve? Motion by Pusa, second by Alderman Hazel. Discussion. All in favor approving that request, basically being someone involved with Parks and Rec and indirectly with Main Street, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm asking for a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding with St. Clair County Transit District, Larry Glensor, for property transfers associated with SCC TD bike trail, and authorizing the mayor to take such actions as necessary to complete the transaction, transactions contemplated therein. Um, Eric, do you want to explain us real quickly what we, what we're doing here?
Sure. Is there a mic?
Right here, Will.
Yeah, there is.
Who's got that one?
I don't know.
Oh, sorry. Step up here to the front, I didn't see it.
So this is, uh, several years ago, uh, in relation to, uh, redirecting Tower Plaza Drive for the extension of, of that roadway for the third phase of Bellevue and Just Road Park. Uh, we, the city bought the property and, uh, moved the right-of-way, uh, and then, uh, Mr. Glensor purchased, uh, through bid process, purchased, uh, the property that was to be vacated. Uh, there was a mix-up in the paperwork, uh, where property was not transferred properly. I'll have, and I'm not sure, because everybody who worked on this is not employed in the city anymore, so, uh, we're just trying to clean this up. So what this does is really just sets everything, set the property right. Uh, and what I, I laid it on your, uh, on your desk, there are a couple, uh, sheets per table, I didn't, for everybody, the exhibits that, uh, that show, uh, the stages, uh, that are related to the memorandum of understanding. So this transfers the property to all the people who were supposed to get it at the first place.
Okay, so before we go into any real great discussion, I'd ask if there's someone willing to make a motion of what I just read, uh, to put it on the table. Motion by Alderman Kinsella, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman White, do I hear discussion now on this proposal? It's really pretty straightforward. As, as Eric said, we're cleaning up some business that goes back to, I think Mike Malloy was director at the time, a host of people are not the same players, but for whatever reason, it didn't get properly filed in the, in the, in the planning.
And there is no transfer or no exchange of monies or anything?
Yeah, no money exchange.
It's just simply swapping the property the way it was supposed to be.
Okay? Okay, roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd ask for a motion to increase the hourly wage of three fire chief officers, the top three, by an additional dollar seventy-five each. Tom, that's per hour, right? Uh, of the next three years, which would increase salaries by three thousand six hundred forty dollars per year over the three-year term for each person, correct?
Correct.
Uh, effective August first, two thousand sixteen. If you weren't at committee meeting finance the other night, um, what's happened is, there's, there's a chain of events that occurred where, when firefighters got raises in recent years, and as some of you were there, they were the only union that got a raise every year, uh, during the recession, where many unions and, and the staff wages were frozen for two years, and with their ongoing wages, because their contract worked out that way, they had a four-year contract right before the recession hit. The gap narrowed greatly, whereas actually battalion chiefs are making more than the assistant chief and probably the deputy chief, et cetera, and to the point where it is part of the factor why some of the people now don't really want to take the assistant chief test, because it just, so this will help slowly correct that gap that was narrowed so, so in, in, you know, so unintentionally, uh, when we, after we created battalion chiefs and after this recession, really kind of slowed a lot of things down. So I hope that's an explanation. Do I hear a motion first of all? This came from, coming from finance, Alderman Sillsby.
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Hazel. Now, do I hear any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Abstained.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman, uh, Sillsby?
The finance committee would like to make a motion to approve the budget amendments as recommended by the finance director, so moved.
Second, motion by Sillsby, second by Cybert to approve, have motion from, coming from finance. Any discussion on the budget amendments? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. In case for those in the room who haven't quite, this is the old People's Bank drive-up right next to, just west of, the sixty-four oh-one that we talked about in the business district. So this is another, uh, they're going to tear that down and build a new facility there, and it's, uh, you know, just starting to see that positive domino effect happening. So we have had a motion and we had a second that passed, all right? Correct?
Right.
Okay, we're moving on. Motion to approve Parkway West, um, the zero-seven dash twenty-five point zero dash two-hundred dash zero-two-two Frank Scott Parkway West, preliminary plat, phase one. Motion by Alderman White, second by Alderman Diddleman, coming from Planning Commission, any discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ardeness and legal review, Alderman Wiggington.
Uh, your honor, before I make this motion, I'd like, uh, Treasure Hard to clarify, sent out an email today to all the Alderman, a couple, uh, word changes in the residential and commercial portion of this ardeness. Uh, before I make the motion, I want everybody to be on the same page.
Okay.
Everybody should have in front of you the proposed changes to the ordinance seventy-nine-seventy twenty sixteen. Uh, when I sent the email out this afternoon was I changed some language. I apologize, I've been looking at this for a few weeks, trying to get this all squared away, and, uh, overlooked a few items. Uh, the initial change on item one A versus, uh, monthly base charge, you already have, but then it was noted to me that on item one B and one C of the following page, it also is stated, uh, monthly minimum charge, and I wanted, I requested that be changed to base charge, but then also immediately following two, two lines below that, uh, I would like to make the request that it also be changed to years, uh, base charge as well. Uh, that is the same for item one C, and then if you go to the next page, item two B and two C have the same errors as this is, uh, both for residential and commercial properties or accounts. And then the following third page from the last page, there was a language change there as well. This actually is from way back when we were billing quarterly, and it had never been corrected. Uh, where it says on item C, last, uh, last three words, next billing cycle, uh, used to originally say quarterly billing cycle, and so, of course, that was a recommendation and that was, uh, would request that that language be changed as well. Uh, otherwise, that's all the changes that I would, uh, bring forward beyond what has already been discussed, with the, uh, changes in the billing from a hundred cubic feet to a hundred gallons.
And this is because of a change that's been brought forward by the water company?
Correct. Water company's changing meters, uh, throughout the city from the unit measure of a hundred cubic feet to a hundred gallons. And I want to make sure that our bills reflect adequately the meter readings that, uh, the, those that experienced this meter change-out will be seen on their lodens.
Very good, thank you, Treasure Hard. Okay, at this time, we're asking, uh, Roger for a motion.
Uh, behalf of the ordinance legal committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance amending chapter thirty-eight sewer code, article four, user charges, revised code of ordinance of Bellevue, Illinois, as amending portions of sections thereof, so moved.
Motion by Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Elmore. Discussion on the proposal, anybody? Roll call. Yes, sir, I'm sorry, Alderman Tyler.
Um, we're doing this by, because they're measuring the water in a different way.
Putting in meters.
So this is actually not a, uh, increase?
There would be no increase or decrease in the, in the charges that are, uh, being sent out to our residents or to the county.
Does that also include the monthly base charge of seven fifty?
Correct.
Thank you.
What probably would have happened, we, I think we determined, if we would have done nothing, we might have seen some less revenue.
We would have been, uh, missing out on revenue due to the fact that there would be fractional usage that we would not be billed for or could not be billed for, because we would, of course, not overbill our residents for usage that we could not, uh, guarantee as being to the next total number.
So this will be fair to the residents and will be fair to the city, which is the residents as well. This is just an adjustment we had to make because they're changing all these meters.
Okay.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any further questions? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, Mr. Clerk, do you want to read those two communications?
Yeah. Twelve A, request from Bellevue Area Rose Society to hold their third annual Halloween parade on ten-thirty of sixteen and one P.M. The parade will start at the city lot at Ninth and West Main Street, and will proceed east on West Main towards the fountain, ending at First and West Main. Following the parade, West Main from the crosswalk entrance to West Main Street to Second Street, and also First Street from A Street to Washington will be closed. There will be a social gathering from one P.M. to three P.M., and the event will include costume contests for dogs and their owners with family-friendly music. Request is also for use of twenty barricades and twenty cones from the street department to close the side streets. Request is for no parking signs along the parade route in the morning until after the duration of the parade. Twelve B, request from Bellevue Area Rose Society to hold a yard sale on Saturday, August twentieth, the bed at the Rose Garden at Eleventh and West Main. Hours will be from seven A.M. to one P.M.
Motion?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve those two communications from Alderman Tyler, second by Alderman Elmore. Do I have any discussions or questions? All in favor of those two requests signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Those motions carry. Um, okay, we go on to, uh, we have no petitions and resolutions. I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, resolution thirty-two seventy-one and thirty-two seventy-two. Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Pusa, to read those two motions and by title only. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a problem reading them together, guys or gals? Okay, proceed.
Fourteen A, resolution thirty-two seventy-one of twenty sixteen, a resolution requesting permission from I-DOT to close Roosevelt, one fifty-nine at Frank Scott Parkway, the Get Up and Go By at Montalito seven twenty sixteen. Fourteen B, resolution thirty-two seventy-two of twenty sixteen, a resolution amending annual budget of the city of Bellevue Illinois for this full year beginning on the first day of May, twenty sixteen, and ending on the thirtieth day of April, twenty seventeen.
Motion to approve, resolution thirty-two seventy-one and thirty-two seventy-two.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Pusa, discussion. Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.[1418.26]